Hello. Good evening and thank you for being here this evening on this wet day where we will now reconvene the August 8, 2017 regularly scheduled board meeting for the Richland 2 School Board of Trustees. We have returned from executive session where we discussed student appeals, student admission requests, personnel recommendations, releases, in district transfers, terminations, and the contractual matter regarding the sale of property. Although Dr. Elkins Johnson is not here in person this evening, she will be here electronically in just a second when this thing rings. So we may be interrupted for a split second and get her on the line. At this time, we'll move on to our inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. Ms. Agostini? Dr. Elkins Johnson, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, we're moving into our inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance.
Mr. Chair, tonight's inspirational moment will be presented by Dr. Helen Nelson Grant, Richland 2's Chief Diversity and Multicultural Inclusion Officer. We believe that Richland 2 is the only school district in the state that has an executive level position devoted to diversity and multicultural inclusion. In her role, Dr. Grant is responsible for recommending, developing, implementing, and managing program initiatives aimed at advancing diversity and multicultural inclusion. Thank you, Dr. Grant.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Plank, members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Davis, and our Richland 2 family, thank you so much, Ms. Agostini, for asking me to share with the board this evening for this inspirational moment. This is really an exciting time to work and live in Richland District 2. As you know, we have a new strategic plan that we're working with. We have our four squares of support, our principal practices that support culture, environment, talent, and achievement for all of our partners. And as Dr. Davis so eloquently and passionately laid it out for administrators last week, each of us has a role to play to make this the premier school district, period. Now, some may scoff at the goal of being the premier school district. Some may question premier, out of which districts, or premier where. Others may doubt, not doubt that we have great people who work in our district, but doubt that we can ascend to such lofty heights as being the premier school district. But I think Dr. Davis had it just right. We will reach our goals because, as he said last week, collective self-efficacy is an unstoppable movement. Now, here's why I'm so confident. In the late 1940s and early 1950s, schools across the South were segregated, including schools in Clarendon County, South Carolina, where both of my sets of grandparents owned property and where my parents lived and worked. It was a place and a time where white children rode the school bus to school, but black children had to walk to school. A place where if your father signed a petition seeking equal rights for black children, you lost your teaching position in the school district and your job in the local community. But also, it was a place where people had the intestinal fortitude, the social will, to stand for what was right and to risk everything they had, including their lives, to make life better for their children. A place and a time when men and women had the self-efficacy to dare to believe that they could and would make a difference. I'm confident that Richland 2 will be the premier school district because I stand on the shoulders of Jay Haskell and Hesse Richburg, who refused to take their names off of the petition. The shoulders of Joseph and Gracie Richburg, who moved to Baltimore, Maryland, when they lost their jobs because Hesse and Jay Haskell would not take their names off of the petition. The shoulders of Leon and Clotel Nelson, who understood how to negotiate and maneuver and get along with people to get what they wanted, even if sometimes that meant learning how to tip your hat. The shoulders of Willie J. and Carrie Nelson, who with his own money bought a school bus and drove black children to school so they would not have to walk, and when she lost her teaching job, moved to Columbia to find work. And the shoulders of other great men and women who came together to form the plaintiff group of Briggs versus Elliott, the very first lawsuit in the Brown versus Board of Education decision, the decision that desegregated public schools in the United States. If they could do that with what limited access they had, what limited resources they had, and limited support that they had, then surely we, with the leadership of this board, with the vision of this superintendent, with the wisdom and institutional knowledge of this executive staff, administrators, staff, students, and parents, and communities, surely we can and will be the premier school district, period. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Grant, for your words. Next on our agenda is the approval of the current agenda. May I get a motion, Mr. Chair? Move approval? Moved to approval by Mr. Manning? Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Agostini. With no discussion, we'll take it to a vote. Thank you very much. Next, we have our special recognitions. Dr. Davis.
We'll have Ms. Liveruth come and present us with our special recognitions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis and Chairman Plank. Good evening, members of the board, our staff members who are here, as well as our community members, parents, and students. Typically, we wait a little later to start, but we have two special recenies that we want to honor tonight because I believe they're probably going to be headed off soon because they are graduates. And so, they have earned the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout, and we want to honor them. They are from Boy Scout Troop 224 of Blythewood. So would Jacob Neiswenger, who recently graduated from Ridgeview High, to please come forward, and Jacob Braddock from Blythewood High School, please come forward. Also, Leighton Gay, who's a recent Blythewood High School graduate, cannot be with us, but he is also an Eagle Scout. Eagle Scout is the highest achievement or rank attainable in the Boy Scouting Program. And, yeah, come forward, and I forgot to ask our chairman to come join them. I got so excited about being back up front here. I wanted Chairman Plank to do the honors this time because this is his first honors and achievements as chairman. Eagle Scout is the highest achievement or rank attainable in the Boy Scouting Program of the Boy Scouts of America. After a lengthy review process, only 4% of Boy Scouts are granted this rank. We are very impressed about hearing their Eagle Scout project because our schools benefited from their work. Jacob Braddock, Jacob, which Braddock is that? Built benches for a nature area at our own Cantalba Trail Elementary School. Leighton Gay built a sandbox for our Center for Inquiry. Jacob Neiswenger built an outdoor space at Trinity United Methodist Church in Blythewood to honor the memory of a young boy who loved the outdoors. We are very proud of all three of our Eagle Scouts, and if you conceive a lofty goal as becoming an Eagle Scout, you should be able to do anything you set your mind to. And we're very proud of you and wish you all the best as you continue your pathways to a purpose. Thank you. Now, I'm going to turn it over just a second to Dr. Davis for a special presentation. One of our board members, but I've got another special presentation to that board member. Tonight is birthday. Chairman, Chairman Manning and our Board Secretary got him a birthday cake. We wanted to wish Board Member James Manning a happy birthday.
Yeah.
(applause) And James has a special presentation for you.
It has become customary and tradition in Richland School District 2 that we recognize our board chair, or our outgoing board chair, with a plaque to show our appreciation for his years of service. And before we present the plaque to Mr. Manning, I'd just like to read a few remarks regarding his leadership. Under Mr. Manning's leadership, R2I2 became a reality, and in its first year of operation, it has become the centerpiece of the district and the Northeast community. Our 20th elementary school is ready to open its doors. Jackson Creek will stand out as a school designed to offer engaging learning experiences while alleviating overcrowding in our surrounding schools. Mr. Manning has chaired the board through some tough challenges, and he has shown great leadership. Always willing to ask the hard questions is something he will leave us with as his legacy of board chair. Also, serving as a consensus builder, making sure he gets input from everyone before making a decision. Advocating for children, all children, but particularly and specifically working to advocate for those students with disabilities. And finally, truly, he truly cares about the district and is incredibly proud and enthusiastic to serve as a leader. So, in appreciation, our plaque reads, "Presented to James Manning and appreciating for his service as Chairman of the Richland School District 2 Board of Trustees, July 2015 through June 2017, presented August 8, 2017." Congratulations, Mr. Manning, and thank you for your service.
Yes, sir.
I want to thank everybody for the recognition, but I couldn't have done it without the support of the board and staff and the community. I've been, it's really been an honor and a privilege to serve in that role. So, thank y'all so much for the time and the recognition this evening. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Ruve. Thank you, Dr. Davis, and thank you, Mr. Manning, for your service and appreciate your leadership over the last couple of years. The Boy Scouts have left the room, but I did want to share, I was talking to Mr. Braddock earlier, that, one, I bailed. I have, I did not make it to the Eagle Scout. My dad was an Eagle Scout. I know how hard that work is, and it's a great accomplishment, so we're really proud of those, of those young men. All right, at this point, we'll move on to 6.1, the approval of the consent agenda. May I get a motion?
So move.
So move by Mr. Manning.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Mackey. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote. Our next item is 7.1, public participation. We do have someone signed up, Mr. Ian, is it Donheimer? Donheimer, yes, if you approach. And if you would start by pushing, depressing the microphone button, and let me just run through a couple housekeeping items. One, you will, this, this meeting is being recorded, is available on YouTube. You'll have three minutes to present your comments. We, as a board, will not respond to those comments. However, someone from the district will, will reach out to you as soon as possible and possibly to even as early as this evening. And, and microphone's on, so it's all yours.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman and Board. I request tonight a, propose a waiver or change in the county's policy on charging tuition for non-residents on incoming homeowners. I currently, I understand that Richland County is a very popular school and well-known for its education. I am currently a property owner within Richland County. I have paid taxes on my property, and I'm currently building a house and paying a mortgage. By building a new house, I'm expanding the future tax base, and so is all incoming families that are building a house for not only the current year, but in long term, forever. I will be paying taxes long after my kids eventually graduate the school system. Additionally, it is my understanding that other counties, such as Florence, used to have a similar tuition policy of charging for non-residents that are moving in, but they found it to be punitive and to incoming families, and left a bad impression. All I ask for the board is to consider a change in the policy that future incoming homeowners that are building and expanding the future tax base be granted waiver for non-residents until their house is built. That's all I ask.
And Mr. Hallmeyer, it's Donheimer?
Donheimer.
Would you state your full name and the address for the record, please?
My full name is Ian Donheimer. I currently reside in Sumter County, but I'm building a house at 109 Stormy Creek Lane in Blythewood.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Chair?
Yes, Ms. Mackey.
Do you have a point of personal privilege for a moment, please? I'd like to take the moment to acknowledge Reverend Betty Butler, who is here tonight. She is a member of Brooklyn Baptist Church and a very engaged community member, and just glad to see you. It always means a lot. A lot of people in the room have to be here tonight, and other people that choose to be here just to be a part of supporting Richland 2 schools. And she's a Richland 2 grandmother, yes, yes, a couple of times over, I think, in Richland 2, yes, but a strong prayer warrior and a strong advocate for children and education. And it's just nice of you to take time out of your schedule to be here tonight. Thank you, Reverend Butler, for being here. Good to see you.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Plank.
All right, next on the agenda is our voting on executive sessions items. 8.1, contractual matter regarding the sale of property. May I get a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that this board authorize the administration to grant, sell, and release property consisting of 34 hundredths of an acre on the campus of Dent Middle School, being shown as Richland County Tax Map Number R16907-02-01 to East Richland County Public Service District. The purpose of this transfer is for a sewer pump station.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Mackey. May I have a second? Second by Dr. Caution Parker. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take it to a vote. Okay, we'll do this as a hand vote if we would. Hold affirmative, raise your hand. And...
Craig, you have my vote.
Okay, yeah. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Next on there is, on our agenda is 8.2, termination, a recommendation for termination. Again, may I have a motion?
Second.
So move by Dr. Caution Parker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Manning. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take that to a vote. Thank you very much. Item 8.3, student appeals. Again, motion?
Mr. Chair, I recommend that we deny the, this student's appeal.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Shad. Have a second. Second by Ms. Agostini. Any discussion? Again, hearing none, we'll take that to a vote. Thank you very much. Next is item 9.1, old business action requested, approval of policy revisions. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I bring before the board tonight the following policy, approvals of the following policy revisions. IKE and IKER, promotion and retention. BCB, board member conflict of interest. BDD, board superintendent relationship. BDF, advisory committees. BDFR, SIC. BDG and BDGR, board attorney, legal services. BDH, board consultant. BE, board meetings. BEC, executive sessions, open meetings. BEDA, board meeting notification. BEDB, board agenda. BDC, quorum. BEDD, rules of order. BEDF, voting methods at board meetings. And BD, BEDG, minutes of board meetings.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Thank you for your detail on that as well.[1297.26][1297.26](laughter) At this time, we'll, the chair will entertain a motion for...
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the recommended policy changes with the fouling amendments. Policy BE, insert, insert board. Policy BEC, replace chairman with secretary. Policy BDD, change the first bullet to all individuals employed by the board are directly or indirectly accountable to the superintendent.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Ms. Agostini. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mackey. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Again, by hand vote, and Dr. Elkins Johnson, if you could do yours verbally, please.
My vote is yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much for all your work on, on that. Next is item 10.1, agenda items for next board meeting. Dr. Davis.
For our next board meeting, we will be bringing to you proposals for revisions. We'll have proposals, IKE, grading assessment systems, IKAR, grading assessment systems, BEDH, public participation at board meetings, BEDI, news media services at board meetings, BEDL, board members, members in electronic communication, BEDM, electronic participation in board meetings, BEDN, board members' use of district-owned portable devices, BG/BGD, board policy process, board review of administrative rules, BG/BGDR, board policy process, board review of administrative rules, and BHC, board staff communication, BK, board membership and professional associations. In addition to that, we will provide a budget update, a bus fleet update, and summer feeding program update, along with a facilities report.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Would anyone like to see anything added to the next meeting or future agenda meetings?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Manning?
I'd like to see at least five more policies added.[1449.13][1449.13](laughter)
I'll tell you what, it's exciting stuff, isn't it?[1454.33][1454.33](laughter) Yeah, yeah. So I assume that wasn't an official request. Okay, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, let me get back over to our agenda. So we now move on to our next public participation. We have no one signed up, but if you would like to address the board, please do so now. Okay, so you know them, we'll go ahead and move on to board and superintendent comments. It is, we have a birthday boy in the house. We'll go ahead and start on my left. Pardon?
Yes, before we get to that, can I make a request that when we have people to come before us for public participation, I know that district staff gets back to them, but could we be copied on the responses just to make sure that we're aware, since they're coming to appeal to the board? I'd like to be sure that we're copied on those responses so we're aware of the disposition of their concerns.
Okay. So noted, thank you.
All right, so comments now?
Yes, yes.
I'd really appreciate the cake, and I do love coconut, so this is right, perfect. I guess we're just there now. We've worked together for a year, so. I do, again, want to thank the board for the support. I can't believe summer's over, and so I'll keep my, my comments short to that tonight since we all want to go home and come back another day, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manning and Ms. Mackey.
As always, thank you for the people in the room that have to be here and, and do the background work to make sure that this district functions. Just wishing everyone a great start to the next school year, and as the summer wraps up, enjoy what precious little remains of that. Thanks for all the people who make this go, the people in the room who don't have to be here but choose to be here. Thank you for that as well. And I want to say, this is, I think I'm two weeks overdue, Saturday before last, we had a, a board retreat, and I'm thankful to Ms. Sherman and, and Mr. Plank and the, the current board members and previous board members, whose vision it was to have this thing and to have it. It was delightful. We had a wonderful facilitator, executive staff was there, when I'm sure they didn't want to be on a Friday, you know, night, but thank you all for your presentations. And I just want to say that it was wonderful, and I enjoyed the work that we put in ourselves to make us better for you. It was just really enriching. I enjoyed, it was, it was an amazing retreat, and it was really enriching. And I hope that as a result of what we've gone through, that we will be better equipped to serve you as, as best we possibly can because we're here for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Yes, I would like to say, if you guys would keep Christian Ray's family in your thoughts and prayers. He was a former student at Ridgeview High School, and he passed a few weeks ago, so please just keep his family in prayers. That's Christian Ray. And also, would like to say, I wish a great and successful school year to our faculty and staff, and just know that we're here to support you, and thank you for that, all that you do.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Dr. Caution Parker.
I'd just like to say, happy birthday again, Mr. Manning. Those years are creeping up on you.[1658.51][1658.51](laughter) Great meeting, Mr. Chairman, and thank all of you and the executive staff and Dr. Davis. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker. And Mr. Shad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just echo the comments that were previously given. I do want to thank Dr. Nelson Grant for the inspirational moment. That is near and dear to me, and thank you for reminding me of our purpose and how far we've come as a nation, and will continue to grow and develop and celebrate diversity of thought and diversity in other ways and inclusion. I did want to congratulate our Eagle Scouts. That is a big achievement. I'm jealous, but it's a good jealousy. And, of course, as always, thanks to our wonderful staff. We did have a wonderful retreat. I said I was going to echo it, but I did want to take a point of personal privilege. It was good to have that self-assessment, not just board assessment, but self-assessment of who I am and how far I have come, and how far I still need to go, and how, I'm sure my fellow board members can see that as well in themselves, and it's going to make us an even better board. Congratulations again to my first chair, Mr. Manning. Thank you for your leadership and your friendship, sir, and I want some cake after the meeting.[1750.83][1750.83](laughter) Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shad and Ms. Agostini.
First, I'd like to welcome everyone back. I realize most of you never left, but I'm glad that we're all back. I'm excited about the upcoming school year. Thank you, Dr. Grant, so much for providing our inspirational moment this evening. Finally, thank you to Dr. Franklin and Tamika and the whole executive staff who worked with the board so diligently to polish up our policies. I appreciate your efforts and all that you did in welcoming our input. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini and Dr. Davis.
Again, I'd like to say, happy birthday to Mr. Manning. And Richland 2, if you're not, if you do, if you're not aware, Richland 2 is having a back-to-school night with the Columbia Fireflies on Sunday, August 20. It's sponsored by the Richland Two Education Foundation. You can purchase your tickets online using the code RICHLANDTWO, and your school name is the company's name. That way, $2 from every ticket goes to your school, and the top three schools in attendance gets lunch with Mason, and yours truly will be thrown out the first pitch. So, come on out and, and watch me smoke it down home plate.
Yeah, baby.[1573.23][1573.23][laughter]
Also, I'd like to say, thank you to everyone who came out and contributed to the school supply, our drives, the stuff, the truck, and stuff at cruise events this past weekend. Thank you for your generous donations to various back-to-school events taking place to help students prepare for the start of school. And we are two weeks away from the start of a new school year. Our teachers return next week. Friday, August the 18th, middle schools host Step Up to Six, and high schools will welcome freshmen to their campuses for a fresh start. These events will give students an opportunity to check out their new schools before upper classmen arrive. The first official day of school is Tuesday, August the 22nd, and we cannot wait. Last year, we lit the spark. This year, we're fueling the flame on our way to becoming the premier school district.
Period.
Thank you.[1628.23][1628.23][laughter] And it is going to be a phenomenal, phenomenal school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. I too want to, again, say happy birthday to Mr. Manning and appreciate his leadership for a two-term period, so thank you very much for that. We also celebrated New to Two over, I believe, since the last board meeting. That was a, what, was a great success, great energy. Dr. Davis did a great job addressing the crowd. It was a fun time, and it's neat to see new teachers coming into the profession as well as seasoned teachers who have chosen Richland Two as their, as their new home. And we've talked about this last board meeting. We're going to continue to talk about, you know, what it means to be a family here in Richland, in Richland Two. And as part of our retreat, I appreciate the kind words from Ms. Mackey, Mr. Shad. I too got a lot out of our retreat. We, we were able to walk away with some, what we call our, our core four, the core values that we want to help drive us as, as a board, and that's success, professionalism, integrity, and of course, family. We'll be continuing the work and to work on our, on what we'll be, name our top three. What are, what are our priorities? What do, what do we want to do as a board, and what are we going to focus on this academic year? That's important to us. The retreat will continue then, in six months, where we will, we will take another look and snapshot on where we are, be presented by Dr. Davis and his team on where they are. And when I say the word retreat, this isn't like the Grove Park Inn, by the way. This is, this is right here in this building at, at seven, eight o'clock in the morning on, on a Saturday, and so I appreciate the dedication, the work that goes into that. So, thank you to Dr. Grant for her words. And then, it was neat to attend, I guess we'd been the ninth graduation, if you count the last school year, for our summer school graduation with our five high schools, our adult ed, our special ed, and then our charter, and then summer school. So, it's neat to see these students out in the workforce, military, and heading off to continue their education. We're really proud of these students, and it's, it's neat to see that. So, thank you so much. And before we adjourn, I'm going to ask for the motion, but we do, I think from a, from a point of order, we do need to vote ourselves out as well, and so, so if I could get a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Mackey, motion made by Ms. Mackey, and seconded by Mr. Shad. I'm sure there's no discussion. May we get a vote? Make it a hand vote, hand vote, and Dr. Elkins Johnson verbal? Yes, she says yes. We're out of here. Have a great night.